Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk. Please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby. Here. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier. Mayor Potem Gero will be joining us momentarily. Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Present.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Vice Mayor Ashby, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, Mayor. All right, please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
And then pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We've got, let us begin tonight with two special presentations. The first is the presentation recognizing Steve Johnson on his retirement. For that, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have Steve Johnson on? I think he's joining us virtually because, all right, great. Well, thank you so much. Hey, awesome. Hi, Steve.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. Well, tonight, I'm incredibly honored to present a city resolution to Steve Johnson. Steve, this will be mailed to your house. I just wanted to let you all know that Steve actually retired this summer as a program supervisor with the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment after 37 years of serving the city of Sacramento. And as you see, Steve is joining us virtually today. Just a little bit history about Steve's history here in the city. Steve was hired with the city of Sacramento in 1985. That was actually the year that I was born. And when he was hired, he was a recreation leader and worked in adult sports as a field supervisor. And he prepped baseball and softball diamonds for tournaments. Steve actually began coordinating tours for the city safari tours. We used to have city safari tours, if you didn't know, and assisted with the leisure enrichment aquatics, all located at the Coloma Center. Steve became a program coordinator and coordinated activities at all elementary schools and junior high schools in Medaview neighborhood in 1989. And then his office was moved to the Sam and Bonnie Pennell Medaview Community Center when it opened. I do also want to share that Steve also played a significant role in establishing the Children's Service Division that provided all types of recreation for Sacramento's youth, like day camps, sport leagues, classes, and more. But as you know, the recession hit, and after the Children's Service Division was cut, Steve was moved to Sacramento's Start. And then after a couple of years at Start, Steve returned back to the Sam and Bonnie Pennell Community Center as a program supervisor, where he completed his career of 37 years. I really just wanted to take this moment to thank Steve for your heart and your hustle, and your years of service, and your long-term commitment in serving our community and keeping our community centers always open. You know, I have had the opportunity to work with you when I was a staffer for Councilmember Carr and now as a councilwoman. And I just want to say thank you so much for your leadership and all the fun decorated events that you have led, like Meda Boo, Meta Lights, and The View. And I know that the staff there misses you dearly. I still do our Mondays with my wats with our seniors, and folks still talk about you, and they miss you dearly. But I want to take this moment to say congratulations, Steve, on your retirement. So with that, I will hand over the virtual mic to you if you'd like to say a few words.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Vang, for the resolution. I had a great career since 1985. I saw many changes over the years. Probably saw the department's name change at least five times over that span of years. But it was always great giving opportunities to our citizens for different types of recreation activities that we did. And I actually started after-school programs, going to them at Bear Flag when I was a kid. And I actually still see my program leader to this day. And so I've always said, my work is your play. So no matter how old you are, our department has been there to deliver. And always remembered, recreation is what you do in your leisure time. So whatever you're doing, reading a book, playing a pickup basketball game, walking with Councilmember Vang on Mondays, anything you do is recreation. And it was actually hard to say goodbye because I wanted to do so much more. And having to leave all the great staff I've worked with over the years was very difficult. But coming back from COVID was just taking too long, and I wanted to go have fun myself. So I decided it was my turn to go and play. So that's pretty much it. I want to thank everyone. Have a great evening, and just keep recreating, because that's what we do.
Awesome. Thanks, Steve. We're gonna miss you. I know the staff at Pennell misses you, and congratulations on retirement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I just want to thank.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Hey, Steve. Thank you for all the time you spent up in the north with me, too, before District Eight stole you away. He helped us grow many, many, many youth programs. I watched him lose many, a water balloon fight to dozens of little kids. And he's a wonderful human being who gave a lot of time and energy and talent to the city of Sacramento, an absolute can-do spirit. We're all better for the time that you spent here, Steve. Appreciate you so much, and I wish you all the best in retirement with you and your family. I hope it's everything you dream of. You're a great guy.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I was always nervous about the water balloon fights with Councilmember in case I was gonna lose my job or not, so. It was fun.
Saw you out there a lot in D8 these last couple of years, and it just was so. No, should be on. Is it okay? Now I'm good? Am I good? Yeah, I just want to say, you know, watching you out there in District Eight, you know, these last couple of years, you could see the joy in the job that you did and the way you interacted with people and kids. I saw it. I remember my state of the District Eight address and so many of the other events. And you're the one that makes everything go. And 1985, congratulations. Well-earned retirement. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor. Yeah, Steve, I just also wanted to thank you for your support of the Parks Department over 37 years. That's pretty amazing, since you look 40. It's no wonder that you like kids so much. You started when you were three. But yeah, you've been great for the Parks Department. We wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you now. Let us move on to recognizing Muslim American Appreciation Month. Councilmember Valenzuela, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and colleagues. So one of the things that we always say makes Sacramento so great is our incredible diversity. So it is with great pleasure and honor that I am here to present this resolution tonight, recognizing the American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, which ends tomorrow. Sacramento is home to over 75,000 Muslim residents who engage and support their communities through multiple organizations and mosques. We all know the Council on American Islamic Relations of the Sacramento and Central Valley through their extensive work to provide COVID resources and information throughout the pandemic. And we are so grateful for those efforts. And another organization represented here tonight, the Muslim American Society Social Services Fund, has been a champion for mental health resources, which we know is so critical now more than ever for the greater community across our city. They've offered peer counseling, a Muslim youth hotline, community education, services for the elderly, and critical support for Afghani refugees, among other things. Our community is a much better place because of all of you and your organizations. So it is with great honor that I'm recognizing some of these individuals and organizations tonight. So here to accept the resolution will be Omar Al Tamimi from CARE and Gulshan Yusuf Zai from the Muslim American Society of Social Services Fund. And they are joined in attendance tonight by Celine Ardine, Wasim Ardine, Halimi Smati, and Zoha Raza. So I'd like to welcome Omar and Gulshan up to the microphone if you'd like to say a few words.
Hello, Salaam alaikum. Peace upon you all. I want to introduce myself. My name is Omar Al Tamimi. I'm the Policy and Advocacy Coordinator at the Council of American Islamic Relations, which I believe to many of you needs no introduction. And I want to thank the city council as a whole, Councilmember Valenzuela for helping us, Mayor Steinberg, the various members of the city council, and anyone who in City Hall helped to push us, put this resolution together and bring us here today. You know, I think for the city as well as for us, it's our first year really coming off of this pandemic. The norms that we established then are slowly switching to the norms that we've had before and new norms as well. We, I think now more than ever, it's really important for us to recognize the Muslim community amongst many other marginalized communities. We saw rises in hate crimes during the pandemic, especially affecting our Asian Pacific Islander communities. And the Muslim community was no stranger to that as well. We saw hate crimes rise as well. This resolution solidifies and unifies our community as part of the greater Sacramento region and the greater Sacramento community. And it works to dispel any notions within our society of being unwelcoming or even further marginalizing already marginalized groups. And for that, thank you. It's also important for us to recognize just how much the Muslim community continues to be a part of the Sacramento community. We have a number of community spaces in the region, including Masjid Anor, Salam, Tarbia. And one of those, the one that's being honored tonight, is Mass SSF. There are many business owners, doctors, lawyers within our community who push our society forward every day. And it's wonderful that we're finally recognizing them on the city and state level. At CARE, we hope to promote a further understanding of Islam as well as provide civil rights and legal services for our communities and communities beyond that as well. We've, over the past year, we've held a number of immigration clinics, legal clinics for the Afghan community, and most recently, the Ukrainian and even Russian refugee communities who are coming in. We've partnered with establishments on the city-state-county levels to help us push through our needs and meet the needs of these communities. And these needs are ever-changing, and they're ever-evolving, and they'll never go away. And so again, just a final thank you to you all for recognizing this and promoting unity for all. I'd like to now pass it off to Gulshan, the Executive Director at Mass SSF, to share a few words. But thank you all again.
Good afternoon. Salaam alaikum. Gulshan Yusuf Zai, Executive Director of Mass SSF, Muslim American Society Social Services Foundation. Just want to start out by thanking you all, thanking the mayor as well as the city council, each of you for recognizing the Muslim community. As Omar said it well, our community, just like many underserved communities have been, through so much, and this is just one step towards helping our underserved communities who have endured so much, not only back home, but then when they come here and starting a new life. So just want to thank you, not only as a Muslim, but also as a refugee myself from Afghanistan, coming here as a kid and going through everything that I'm seeing now and providing to the agency that I lead. So thank you so much. It means a lot, given the crisis that has occurred in the past year with Afghanistan. And it continues to be very heartbreaking as we serve many, many Afghan community members. Just very briefly, Mass SSF has been around for 15 years. It started initially in 2007 for the reason that there was really no place to go when you needed to talk to someone, where someone who looked like you, someone who could speak your language, understand your culture, and really, really, most importantly, have that lived experience. Like myself, who has lived experience, we have staff that are about 15, we're going on to 20. And we are funded by various entities to be able to provide the services we do. Our goal is really to keep families together and save lives. And we have been doing that for 15 years. We have various programs, critical ones such as Peer Support, clinical, as well as, you know, senior programs, Amala Youth Line, a new Afghan program that started because of last year and with the crisis that occurred. As well as, we are one of the first agencies in partnership with five other, excuse me, four other agencies that opened the very first shelter for Muslim women, the Domestic Violence Shelter called Amana House, which means safety. So we have been doing this for 15 years. And in the past year, just the services that we provided in terms of COVID, we've served over 26,000 in terms of outreach. All our staff are able to provide services in five languages, which include the two Afghani languages. And so this is a critical part when you are serving communities that just have not had that cultural competence and awareness that they need. And in terms of the Afghan program, in the last three months, excuse me, four months, we've served over 270 families with a program that California Department of Social Services began, where they can get rent support for three months to a year. As well as the Amana House, we opened it last year, and within a month, it was full. And now we are struggling to find more space. We are working with my sister's house, but it is a struggle, and not only with COVID, but also Afghan crisis. There's a huge rise in domestic violence. Again, I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
And appreciate all that you've done for our community.
And I'd love to invite you and your guests, if you'd like. We're gonna do a quick photo here in front with the resolution.
Yeah, Councilmember Valenzuela, I just want to say thank you for bringing this resolution forward. You know, the Muslim American community is very important to Sacramento and very important to me. And I know the relationships and the bonds of friendship between the Muslim American community, for example, the Jewish American community, has been a source of great pride. I think we, not unique, but maybe we show the way for others, that we're in the battle for justice together. So thank you very much. Okay? All right. Please finish the pictures. It's okay. We're fine. Okay. That's a good way to start the afternoon meeting here. Thank you again, Councilmembers Vang and Valenzuela, for very good presentations. So let us begin with the consent calendar then today, which is the items 1 through 15. Are there any items members would like to discuss separately, be voted on separately?
Mayor, I need to pull item 13 just for some additional guidance to staff.
So this is discussion? Okay. Separate vote or?
Yes, a separate vote, because we need to amend.
A separate vote. That's fine. Okay.
Mayor, comment on number 10?
A comment on number 10? Just thank you, Councilmember Harris. Let me just make sure I got everybody. Is there, that's that. So Councilmember Harris, why don't you make the comment on item 10?
Yeah, so for those who don't know, I've been on the Streetcar JPA pretty much since its inception. And the project has gone through many permutations. Working with Congresswoman Matsui and at least one of my GPA members, Chris Ledesma from West Sacramento, we settled on a new alignment for the Streetcar route, which I think is very advantageous. We've come to a good, really actually a good alignment for a connection between our two cities. So I'm fully in support. Unfortunately, I'm just about the last elected who started on the Streetcar JPA. But I think this is going in a great direction, so I certainly hope my colleagues will support it.
And someday, a book will be written about this project with a foreword by Jeff Harris. But I'm glad it's aligned, so to speak. Very good. Thank you, Jeff. It's been a lot of work, I know.
Mayor, I'll move 1 through 15 minus 13.
Okay, then we'll get to 13 after. Okay. There's a second. Is there public testimony on, on any of the consent calendar items, including 13?
If I would like to remind the members of the public, if you would like to speak on the consent calendar, if you are in chambers, spill out a speaker slip. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. It looks like I have four speakers. We are still on the consent calendar. Would you like to take those now, Mayor?
Yes, please.
First is Paula Lee. Following Paula is William Berg and then Barry Boyd. Paula, if you'll unmute. Paula Lee, if you'll unmute.
Hi, Paula.
It looks like she's unmuted. Let's move to the next person, William Berg, and then Barry Boyd.
Good evening. My name is William Berg. I'm calling about item 2, the dissolution of Sacramento Heritage. I'm president of Sacramento Heritage, Inc., and I found out about this yesterday. I know city staff planned to wind up Sac Heritage, and we've had discussions about it. But no dissolution plan was presented or discussed with the board. Our board hasn't even met since May 2021. All our meetings have been canceled. The staff report makes no mention of our revised bylaws of 2015 or our strategic plans, which establish new preservation, education, and heritage tourism programs, including classes, walking tours, a smartphone app, our management of the Historic Places Grant and City Plaque programs. Sacramento Heritage is being dissolved because of changes to the way meetings are held enacted by the city manager, which puts such a burden on staff time that it's now infeasible to hold regular meetings. Now, a dissolution plan begins with a decision by our members, you, the city council, or the board, followed by disposition of assets. Our current bank balance is $16,213.73. Article 7 of our Articles of Incorporation says, "Upon dissolution or winding up of the corporation, its assets shall be distributed to a tax-exempt 501(c)(3) nonprofit fund, foundation, or corporation." The board will thus become responsible for the disposition of those funds, even if you, our members, vote for dissolution. That's the first step in disincorporating. If you pass this item tonight, dissolving the legal relationship between the city of Sacramento and Sacramento Heritage, Inc., I will call a meeting in the Sacramento Heritage Board of Directors, which will no longer need to meet the Ralph M. Brown Act requirements for public meetings as we will no longer be a public body, and we will create a disposition plan for those funds. Also, item 16 today is regarding subcommittees. If the council passes item 16, the city will no longer be able to take on Sacramento Heritage's programs because they're both based on subcommittees. Take this into consideration when you hear that agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I want to ask about this, if I might. Is Mr. DeCoursey, Sean DeCoursey, here?
Yes, good evening, Mayor.
Could you please respond to Mr. Berg here? Have he raised, he said that he didn't have notice and that there's still outstanding questions about the fund balance? Is this something we might put over for a week to discuss further? Or what do you say?
Yes, this comment comes a little bit out of left field. We did have extensive discussions about the dissolution of the board. I've met with Preservation Sacramento to discuss it. We've notified the Board of Sacramento Heritage several times. So yeah, to be honest, this is coming a little bit out of left field. But with that said, if it's the pleasure of the council, we can continue the item, and we can conduct additional outreach. I'm not sure.
If that's okay, and again, not casting judgment in any way, but I think if, give it one more week to talk, including like what happens to the $16,000 and?
Sure. The city attorneys looked at this issue, and the city council has the discretion to spend those funds. We would be returning to the city council with a recommendation on how to spend those funds.
Okay. Why don't we take one more week if we could get an amended motion, if there's no big objection here, and then meet with Mr. Berg one more time and just, you know? And then, Mr. Berg, it's gonna be one week, sir. That's it. So we've got a, if there's some alternative, then next week is when we need to decide this, okay? A motion's amended to continue, thank you, to continue, what item was it? Item 2 for a week. The second or the motion willing to amend? Okay, so that's amended. All right, next caller, please.
Next is Barry Boyd.
Thank you and good afternoon, or late afternoon. I was calling to stand behind the comments of Chair Berg. And to his point, I am also on the Heritage, Inc. Board of Directors, as the HCAA's chair designee. And I have not received any information of dissolution of the Heritage, Inc. nonprofit. To, I'm not saying counter, but what was just stated, that there has been outstanding outreach to its board members, to which again, I am one. And as of yesterday, was the first I'm hearing of the dissolution of the Heritage, Inc. nonprofit. So I do thank you, council, for extending at least one more week. But to speedball this, without the Heritage Board of Directors, we have not met in a year, and I have been a designee, designated to the board for one year. So there has not been a meeting, so there has been no discussion that I have been a part of. So when outreach is done, I don't know why it has failed to reach me and apparently to the Chair Berg as well. But with that said, we're moving forward with more discussion. And I thank you for at least that one week, and perhaps we'll figure out what the what is. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Please include Mr. Boyd in those discussions, too. Thank you. Okay, very good. So let's vote on the consent calendar items 1 through 15, with the exception of 2, which is being continued for a week, and 13, which is going to be taken up separately. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember, Premier Potem Gero is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right. That passes. All that, those items pass. Item 13, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And I definitely want to start off by thanking the city staff and Councilmember Jennings's office for a lot of meetings and the conversation about this item with the leaders from the Land Park Community Association and the Upper Land Park community groups. This is a really complex item. It's a very important bridge project, and so we want to make sure we get it right. So this resolution had already been amended to include some feedback, and I'd like to amend it a little further when I move the item to add directional signage language to Bullet 8A. And yes, I will email this to you, Mindy, so you don't have to worry. And to direct planning staff to look at Broadway in the general plan, specifically in the mobility and the land use zoning sections, to ensure that the culmination of all of the various transportation plans and the new bridge, and analyze that to see if it warrants any adjustments or further mitigation to either of those two documents, including potential adjustments to the FAR along Broadway. So that is my motion for this item. And I want to again thank staff for concurring with this and Councilmember Jennings's office for being so engaged.
That's terrific. Okay, so that's a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second. I assume we do not have any public testimony on item 13?
I do not.
Very good. Lynn, let's call the roll. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier? Mayor Potem Gero is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, the consent calendar is dispensed with. Thank you all very much. We have one important item on the discussion calendar, and that is item 16. Madam Clerk is going to present on this. And Vice Mayor, I don't know if you want to wait till after the clerk, but last week, you gave some direction.
No, Mayor, I actually have a couple of comments, if that would be okay.
At the beginning?
Yeah, at the beginning, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Madam Clerk, I know you'll be brief in your presentation, but I wanted to address three things that I asked you to change and make sure my colleagues all know about these changes. Spoke with the mayor about these in advance. First of all, start again by thanking my PMPE colleagues for really digging into this and spending some time on it. Want to thank your office. This is not easy, Madam Clerk. It's hard work. And I want to thank all the people serving on the committees and commissions, and got lots and lots of input. And there are three changes that I am, well, one clarification and two changes that we have made since this came last year. that we have made since this came last week. One is that the ad hocks will go away, but there are ad hocks right now, so we want to make sure people know we're not expecting them to disappear next week. Give them till the end of the year to ramp down any existing ad hocks. That would be true for any and all committees and commissions that have ad hocks. And then, to be in compliance with our own rules for ourselves, and these are good governance rules that we put in place with as a set of packages around good governance and transparency, we would no longer have ad hocks for committees and commissions, but we would add the language that if there was a request for a standing committee, that that request would be made to the PNP E committee, and then the PNP committee would review, at the same time that they're reviewing annually, all of the requests of each committee and commission. And then, all of those recommendations come to the full council most likely on consent, but if there was something to be discussed, that they would be included there. And then, the third and final change is that rather than doing a one-year, we really were trying to address the issue of a lot of people being able to be involved in leadership roles. But rather than doing one term for chair, board chairs, we would do a two-year board term for chairs, and it would be two consecutive years. So, those are the changes that we're proposing. Maybe you can take us quickly through, Madam Clerk, and then hear from my colleagues. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do promise to be brief. I am, good evening, I'm Mindy Kuppy, your city clerk, and I'm very excited to be here tonight, not only to be one of your first presenters in chambers, but to be bringing this important ordinance update forward. So, for background, last June, the mayor asked that the Personnel and Public Employees Committee, PNP E, establish oversight, facilitation, and staffing responsibilities for city commissions. And in November, the PNP E committee gave direction to review and recommend updates to the Sacramento City Code 2.4, which is boards and commissions generally. Then in May, the PNP E committee reviewed the ordinance amendment and unanimously approved forwarding it to the city council. At last week's city council meeting, as Vice Mayor mentioned, we continued this item to tonight with further direction, and those changes are incorporated into the item that was before you tonight and what was published last week. So, as you know, commissioners are appointed from within the community and are expected to represent the city as a whole, while promoting community and stakeholder input and taking into account all viewpoints. Serving as a commissioner provides a way for residents who have special experience or interest to participate in the city's decision-making process by advising city staff and the city council on numerous issues. The specific role of most commissions is to review and make recommendations to the city council on matters within its scope and authority and of responsibility. This is most commonly achieved by the commissions at a publicly noticed meeting, serving as a venue for public input and participation. Okay, as we continue to upload, uplift commissions to the same expectations, standard, and processes as city council, I'm excited to be creating what I think will be a model commissions program that other cities will emulate. We will build a model of transparency and inclusiveness. Our commissions will be inclusive, with a diversity of voices. We'll be transparent. All activities will be open to the public. We'll encourage public participation. We'll follow consistent standards, such as the Sacramento Sunshine Ordinance and the Brown Act. We'll have clear legislative history of the important work that they do, and we'll have a clear and consistent process for commissions to communicate and to advise the council. Okay, so now the meat of it. The proposed ordinance update before you will do the following. It moves the existing procedures for mayor and council vacancies to its own chapter for clarity between appointed and elected officials. We did not change any content. We just moved it to a more logical place in the code. Defines terms, boards and commissions, to include committees. Updates the procedures for appointing persons to a board and commission, which reduces our recruitment time by at least two weeks, so you won't have to listen to me read into the record at the end of each meeting. Formalizes the longstanding practice for members to hold over in expired terms until a new appointment is made, thus ensuring that the important work can continue uninterrupted. Makes city employees ineligible by members of boards and commissions unless they're appointed in the capacity of their employment. Standardized terms and term limits across boards and commissions to ensure clear understanding and upcoming possibilities for service. There are a few exceptions. Clarifies the grounds for removal of members of boards and commissions, typically meeting attendants. Stipulates that commissions may establish standing committees with council approval and prohibits ad hoc committees. And this will ensure that commissions' voices are uplifted, that their important work is done at a publicly noticed meeting where public input is encouraged, and the legislative history of their work is preserved. This limits the amount of service as a chairperson to two consecutive terms to create opportunity for more voices to serve in this capacity. This ensures that diverse voices are lifted up and that commissions are inclusive. Clarifies the role of the city attorney and the city clerk, providing clear legal and administrative support for the city's boards and commissions. And it directs the city clerk to report at least every five years on the status of boards and commissions. This ordinance is another piece of the puzzle in uplifting the important voice of our city council-appointed advisory bodies. Okay, so we've done a lot of work, we have done a lot of work in, to uplift commission voices, though we have much more to do. So, in the past year, we have ensured that all commissions follow the same high standards as the city council for agendas, meeting facilitation, legislative history, the mayor council standards, and processes. We have created a recruitment video, a commissioner handbook, commissioner orientation and onboarding process, and a meeting facilitation guide for chairpersons. But as I mentioned, there's still much to do to continue to uplift the important voices of our commissions. Next, we will be bringing an update of the council rules of procedure to the city council, which will address, among other things, a standard and consistent process for commissions to report to the council, including accomplishments, recommendations, and upcoming year objectives. A few comment letters address this important topic. The item before you tonight is our municipal code, which is the law of our city, that, and then the how we do things is incorporated into the council rules of procedure. So, that's the next step. We will develop ongoing training for commissions and department staff. We will expand our recruitment for all commissions with a focus on diversity and inclusion, and we are partnering with the city attorney to continue to educate commissions, including an update on this court. So, in summary, I'd like to thank my partners in this recommended ordinance update, first to the mayor for recommending the importance of our commissions and asking that additional resources be directed towards uplifting our commissions program. Wendy Clock Johnson, chief assistant city clerk, our city attorney's office, Phoenisha Gaddis, Steve Itigaki, Matt Ruyek, and Susanna Alcala Wood. I'd especially like to thank Wendy and Phoenisha, who are champions and did some of the amazing work and thinking on this update. Commissioners, chairs, and vice chairs, who I briefed and provided feedback, and of course, the PNP E committee for their direction and advocacy for uplifting our commercials. I'd like to show a brief video highlighting our commissions program, and I'll transition back to the dais, and then I'll be available for any questions.
Serving as a council appointee to a City of Sacramento commission is both an awesome opportunity and a significant commitment. The following information will give new appointees and potential applicants an overview of the position's roles and responsibilities. The City of Sacramento utilizes more than 25 commissions to promote community and stakeholder input. Most serve in an advisory capacity to the city council. However, a few are quasi-judicial, complaint reviews, or appeals boards. Serving as a council appointee provides a way for residents who have special experience or interests to participate in the city's decision-making process by advising city staff and the city council on a wide variety of issues. As an appointee, you interact creatively as a link between the city council and citizens of all ages, interests, and backgrounds. You represent the city as a whole, and will help facilitate active and inclusive input, ensuring that all voices are incorporated into any recommendation made to the city council. To effectively participate, appointees often have lengthy reports to review in order to prepare effectively for public meetings. Attendance at meetings is essential. The Ralph M. Brown Act, California's open meeting law, and the City of Sacramento's sunshine ordinance have requirements to ensure that all city councils, boards, commissions, and committees are inclusive, transparent, and encourage public participation. Agendas must be posted to clearly communicate what the commission will be discussing and how the public can be part of that conversation. The order and conduct of business of council-established commissions are also governed by the City of Sacramento Council Rules of Procedure. It is critical that appointees only discuss items under their purview at an open and public meeting and avoid discussions outside the public forum. A meeting could be any gathering of a majority of appointees to discuss items under their jurisdiction, and discussions in non-public formats, such as email, phone, or text message, must be avoided. To ensure transparency and a high level of service, appointees have educational requirements, such as ethics and sexual harassment training. Appointees may also have reporting requirements, such as filing of a statement of economic interests, FPPC Form 700, upon appointment, annually, and when leaving. We appreciate your interest in the City of Sacramento Board, Commission, and Committee Program, an opportunity for citizens to ensure transparent, open, and inclusive participation in the city's decision-making process. Please visit our website for appointee resources and information on applying to serve. Commissions.cityofsacramento.org. Clerk@cityofsacramento.org. 916-808-7200.
All right, well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much for laying all that out. Good, excellent presentation. Let me turn back to the Vice Mayor.
Okay.
And then, Councilmember Harris, I was going to take public testimony after that, but I can take you first, whatever you prefer.
Let me ask a clarifying question.
Okay, let me...
Okay. Yeah, sure, that's fine. First of all, Madam Clerk, great job with the presentation. You really, and your team, quite skilled at your presentations, and I think it's very helpful to illustrate to folks, and I'm excited for the committees and commissions to have that kind of assistance moving forward. I know your team has worked really hard, and so has the city attorney's team. Thank you very much. They've done a really good job. A lot of people trying very hard to find a pathway forward here. I know we have a few public speakers, and I'm excited to hear from them, but Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation here with the modifications that I previously discussed. So, ad hocks have till the end of the year to ramp down. No longer have ad hocks, but we will allow subcommittees or standing committees to be requested through the PNP E process, and that a chair could do two one-year terms or two years at the most.
And just on the intent of that second one, because I know, I don't know what we discussed this, could somebody take off a year or two as chair, and then if they were still on that board, come back? I don't know.
I think technically, yes, but they could only do two in a row.
Two in a row.
And then, they'd have to play another role. You know, and the point of this is trying to get
Yeah.
more people engaged in our process, and we've, we have had, I've been on PNP E, and I've been the chair of it for the better part of 12 years, and one complaint that we get a lot is that some districts are completely left out. A lot of times, it's District Two and District Eight, that we just don't get a lot of representation from. And so, trying to rotate and trying to get more folks to participate or have the opportunity to participate is, I think, a laudable cause, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, so Vice Mayor Ashby, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question about that same subject, about chairing a board or commission. Of course, I've, I sat on a commission, and I found a lot of value in rotating the chair seat, giving more people a chance to have a leadership role. I think it's valuable. At the same time, I can tell you that sometimes people don't step forward, and it's difficult to fill the chair seat. So, it kind of cuts both ways. You can have a dominant personality who just kind of wants to control things, or maybe someone more timid might not step up. I, you know, I can't say it's a good idea or a bad idea, quite honestly, but the intent, then, is that a person could serve two consecutive years as chair. They could do a year, maybe take two years off, and then be nominated again. But I just wanted to make clear that there's no presumption that if you're elected chair, you will serve a two-year term.
That is correct. You could do one term. And, you know, I think one of the things, Councilmember Harris, that we're going for here, too, is a little bit more uniformity across the committees and commissions. There are examples of committees and commissions who have done a really great job of having multiple people serve as chair, and even encouraging people who maybe were kind of shy to step in. Police commission is one that I think has done a good job of, like, getting people who maybe weren't wanting to be a chair to be the chair. That's a good example. There are other committees and commissions, like disability, where it's been hard for them to find somebody else who would do it. So, Brandy Boyd has filled the gap for so long. So, I think the goal here is to adopt a policy that goes across all the boards and committees, that has our staff have some tools to try to encourage broader participation, not just across the city, but across the appointed members. Obviously, if it's not working, we can change it. This council can change it at any time. Also, a group could come to PNP E. They could always wave a flag to PNP and say, like, we're having a lot of trouble here. We need a, we need a special rule, and we would be able to take that up immediately. So, just looking for a little bit of continuity.
So, I agree with all of that. I'd like to say it's been a shared work with, I mean, a pleasure to work with Mindy on this process and Vice Mayor as well. We actually have thought about this a lot and deliberated a lot, spent a lot of time in meetings talking about it, so I would like to second the motion.
Second the motion. Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded. All right. I know I have some questions as well. I'm just wondering whether to wait until, so let, let, I'm, let me ask one for clarity. It's sort of obvious, but I think it's important. There's nothing in these rules, nor could there be any of these proposed rules, or anything that we could or would rightfully say that prohibits members of a commission from meeting with one another informally, so in any significant numbers, so long as it's less than a majority, correct?
Correct. Just the same as we can. You know, Councilmember Harris and I can go to coffee every week if we'd like and talk about things. We just have to be mindful that we don't violate the Brown Act. Our commissioners have that same responsibility. There's nothing to prevent them from having some dialogues. That's correct, Mayor.
And in terms of the council policies, that you may have said this, just to reiterate, the, I remember when I became mayor, the council put in the rules, I think in my second meeting, eliminating ad hoc committees for the city council, correct?
That's right, Mayor. That was the final piece to a larger package that was adopted a few months before you got here, that the council had been working on, and you were instrumental in getting the last piece across the finish line there. But we worked with, we had, we had an entire committee that worked with our then clerk, and the legal women voters, and Common Cause, and the fair political practices to put together a suite of 11 good governance strategies that are all about ethics and good governance and transparency, putting Sacramento as a city in the number one seat of any city in the state of California for transparency and good governance, as judged by groups like Common Cause. Nicholas Heidorn was a big part of that. Paula Lee was a big part of that. Gary Winnick was a big part of that. Shirley Concolino, myself, and a staff member from District Two named Andrea. So, yes, Mayor, that was the, the ad hocks were a final and critical piece to that good governance.
That's right. You guys had done a lot of work before I became mayor, so I just, you know, it's the guy with the gavel. Okay.
If you have other questions, I think it's...
I have a clarifying question.
Clarifying question. Go ahead.
If I can. So, on the, I guess, on the subcommittee's piece, what would be the criteria for the council to say yes or no on having that established?
It's a balance. So, they would make the request to us, and then we would be asking staff on balance, is the priority that they have laid out something that we could assign staff to? Because we will be, now that they're subcommittees, they'll be noticed, they'll have to be staffed, they'll have to be here, just like a PNP E committee, or your lawn ledge committee would be. We need the television crew. We need all those resources. So, on balance, I always use this example, because I think it's one that will probably come up. The animal group, right, the animal oversight group, at some point will undoubtedly ask for a subcommittee to look at what it would take to become a no-kill shelter. Then they would present that to PNP E. They'd lay out why that's important to them, what it means to them, what they're going to try to bring back, how long they need, like, is it a six-month committee? Is it a one-year committee? How many people they want to have on it? Then we, PNP E, would be able to take a look at that and say, Madam Clerk, how many hours is that going to take you? How many staff is that going to take you? And then, on balance, make a recommendation to the full body. And of course, they would have the opportunity then to advocate, both at the PNP E meeting and at the council meeting. And, you know, I think part of this, Councilmember Chenier, is to keep the numbers down, because right now, we have just far too many, and we can't staff them. But this would give us a control mechanism that would allow the council to manage staff time and manage what is a priority above the costs associated with the City of Sacramento. Sure, there'll be plenty of yeses given out, would be my prediction.
And then, I think the other clarifying question for me, and maybe this is for Mr. Ruyek, is, as the mayor said, people could meet informally. So, if that's announced at the dais by the chair and said, for those of you who want to meet informally about this, does that then trigger the Brown Act?
Councilmember Chenier, no. So long as they comply with the restrictions of the Brown Act. So long as they meet informally, less than a majority, and don't share that information with that last member that makes majority, they can do that in compliance with the Brown Act.
And what do we, what do we call those? Are those working groups? I just want to be clear for people who are...
Those don't have a title, because they can do whatever they want, just like we can do whatever we want.
Just inform, it's just, members can meet informally.
There's nothing to prohibit a chair from saying, you know, as long as I don't go over the number and have a majority, they can bring people along to meet on an issue.
And Councilmember Chenier, if I may, I do intend on meeting with each commission, so I will be presenting at each commission, collaborating with the city...
with the City Attorney's Office on the Brown Act, so really to let members know what they can and cannot do under the Brown Act.
Madam Clerk, can you state, because I know we're going to hear from some very important people in the community that are spending a lot of time doing commission work and look forward to it, okay? But I just, I want to get it out here, what the problem is from a city staff perspective, this is the way that I understand it. You can say it, but do you want me to summarize what I understand the problem, which is that if there's, ad hoc committees have to comply with the Brown Act. And so they would be essentially official committees of the city commission. If so, they have to be staffed, because there is a, but there is a protocol.
That's right, Mayor.
And so there is a significant workload issue when it comes to being able to staff ad-hocs, and that's why the recommendation is being made, to distinguish a formal ad hoc, which requires staffing, and Brown Act compliance with the ability, which has been clarified here, but is inherent in the ability of any citizens' group, is to meet in any way that you want, so long as it's not a majority of people. And so that's, is that the, is there any other rationale? Is that the rationale?
Yeah, I think, Mayor, one other thing to consider is that, over time, we have had, on average, anywhere from 25 to 30 committees and commissions. So try to think about it from that context. If you had 30 committees or commissions, or 27 committees or commissions, and each one had two or three subcommittees that were meeting, and you were having to staff those, you'd quickly get to 100 meetings a month. And not only do we not have staffing for that, we don't have space for that. So this is an attempt to, as you and Councilmember Chenier asked the PMPE to do, to consider ways to streamline committees and commissions so that there's consistency, so that there's more equity, so that more people can be involved, and so that we meet our own transparency and good governance standards.
I have a quick follow-up question, if I could just
Well, what do we, Councilmember Vels, a little
Sorry, sorry, just because I haven't had a chance to ask it, because I'm a little confused, just to make sure that I'm understanding this, because it sounds like what we're doing is kind of telling folks to, like, not announce that you're meeting during public meetings and not create
You can.
When you're still going to, because what, so I guess that's a follow-up from Matt, and I know I saw your hand is up, too. I'm a little confused as to the comments that were just made about if there's an ad hoc committee that is less than a majority of a board
There's no ad-hocs, there can be no ad-hocs.
I know, but if there were, hypothetically speaking, they say, "We're announcing that we're forming an ad hoc committee, and there's going to be three members, and it's a seven-member commission," why that would be subject to the Brown Act? Because it sounds like we're kind of doing the opposite of transparency, because we're saying, instead of announcing that we're going to meet, so we've done this as a council recently, right, in terms of Measure O, we said there's four councilmembers that are going to meet with the county about a partnership agreement. So that is now away from, you know, any transparency or any report back, like, there's no requirements on them that I'm aware of, because they're under the Brown Act. So if we're saying, I get the staffing issue is sort of one thing, but I guess I'm trying to figure out how the Brown Act applies in that context, because in my interpretation, and I know we're jumping ahead of public comment, it's more transparent if they're announcing during public meetings and recapping back what they're saying in those ad hoc meetings than if they just met offline. So that's my question for Matt.
Sure. They're not allowed to have ad-hocs. So I think maybe that's the confusion. It wouldn't be an ad hoc, but
Okay. Is it just the title that I'm messing up, then?
So let me clarify a couple comments that were just made. So technically, when we did our transparency ordinance, Chapter 4.04, what we, what the council adopted in the ordinance was that council ad hoc committees would be subject to the Brown Act. We had council ad hoc committees. We didn't prohibit them, but what, we have gotten rid of them over time. We went through a process, if you remember, to actually just phase them out, including the Governance Ad hoc Committee, which was the one who recommended the phasing out of those ad hoc committees. But we put in Chapter 4.04 that council ad hoc committees would be considered Brown Act bodies, and now we don't really have any of them as a practical matter. Now, let's go back. Under the Brown Act, but for that provision, ad hoc committees would not be subject to the Brown Act. That's the definition of an ad hoc committee. An ad hoc committee is a limited duration, limited purpose, minority number, composed portion of the overall body that is not subject to the Brown Act. So in fact, the boards, commissions, and committees, ad hoc committees are currently not subject to the Brown Act, so can in fact meet in private and discuss matters which have been assigned to them, for example, by the chair, outside of a public meeting. What happens if you transmute to this other provision, which prohibits the ad hoc committees, but doesn't prohibit members from engaging in communications with each other? And to be clear, not at the direction of the chair or the members at a meeting. This would be done informally outside the meeting with a less-than-Brown Act number of persons in this. They wouldn't be officially sanctioned committees, subcommittees of that committee, and that's the distinction. It would just be a minority number of persons who have decided to talk about an issue and can bring it to that committee, but they don't have the imprimatur of having been established by the chair or the committee itself. And they haven't been given a specific task, haven't been asked to do something. So that's the difference between those kinds of committees. They're not prohibited, but they just don't have the sanction or imprimatur of the committee to make decisions on its behalf.
And they aren't sanctioned by the city either. So they'd be self-initiated, be like if Councilmember Vang called me and said, "Councilmember Ashby, we want to work with you on something, tobacco ordinance," and I said, "Yeah," and then we started talking about it, then jointly came forward, talked, "It's not sanctioned by the mayor, we just decided to do it." That's already within their purview, but the ad-hocs, which is directed from the dais, would not be allowed.
So can I finish, then? Because now I'm doubly confused, because I thought what I had asked was someone, the chair at the dais can create, I'm calling it a working group, as long as it's not
Not from the dais, Councilmember Chenier.
And you said that's okay.
No, I'm saying that that would be, no, excluding that, to not do that.
I thought you said that was okay when I asked
Yeah, to not do that, that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be appointed or sanctioned or established by the chair. It would be, as the Vice Mayor suggested, it was a hallway conversation between two folks who decided to work on something, but that was not established or sanctioned by the chair or the committee itself.
Not from the dais.
Okay.
Okay, let's hear from the public here, and weigh in, and then we'll go back, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. And if I may, I really, we're talking about transparency, being inclusive, making sure we publish an agenda so that the public could be involved, that our legislative history is maintained, and it's really doing everything in open and transparent
That's the other thing, if it's not staffed, then there's no requirement of a history of what was discussed, okay?
Yeah, no agendas, no minutes, and so forth. So I have four members in chambers. I would like to remind members of the public, if you want to speak on this agenda item, if you're in chambers, fill out a speaker slip. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. After the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips, and the raise-hand feature on Zoom will be disabled. So the first speaker is Flo Kofur, then Keon Bliss, then Graciela Castillo-Krems.
Good evening. I would like to first thank the clerk for meeting with the chairs and vice chairs. Back in 2020, we had several meetings, and we also submitted some recommendations. As well, the city auditor made recommendations about the Sacramento Community Police Review Board on February 22 of '22. And so the PMPE committee was tasked, along with the clerk, with heeding some of those recommendations. And so we have submitted a joint letter, which lifts up some of the conversation that you all were having here. And our contention is that this may be an issue of semantics, but disallowing ad-hocs means that, to use Councilmember Ashby's example, you have people who have then decided on their own to meet together, except if it's not just you and Councilmember Vang who decide to talk about a tobacco ordinance, but then there are three other ad hoc groups now who are in a Brown Act violation, because multiple people have gotten together without the knowledge of other people to discuss something. The way we currently use ad-hocs is exactly as the city attorney described. We, on the record, say, "These people are going to get together and talk about this thing, and then bring it back to our body." At every single meeting, I can speak specifically for Measure U, and I'm sure this is the case for others, we have a portion of our agenda which says, "Report back from those committees." And at each meeting, we talk about who is in those groups, so that those people can join or leave if they're not able to stay. It allows it so that as chair, I don't go off and talk to an additional person and violate the Brown Act. What we are doing right here is taking that away and drawing everything underground. And if we're doing that in the spirit of transparency, it's going to have the exact opposite effect. We will no longer be able to say on the record that four people are going to get together and discuss something, and instead, eight people will go off and discuss it, and the city attorney will be mired in Brown Act violations. So I'm strongly imploring you not to take away this tool and simply say that your advisory bodies can follow along with what they've already been doing and establish ad-hocs, because you do not want to have a 12-hour meeting where you watch me change prepositions in preparation for a letter to you. Your city staff don't want to be a part
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
I'm going to give Dr. Kofur another minute here, okay? At the discretion of the chair.
Thank you.
Okay? Finish, please, because you're
Yes, so you don't want to have, what we currently do in our ad-hocs, right now, we're working on our annual report for Measure U. What it would allow, what we do right now is Marge and Lisa, and we get on a Zoom, and we're literally on Google Docs editing a document that then is going to appear before our body in September. You do not need city staff to do that. We are essentially operating the way that your staff do for you, when you on the record say, "We'd like to have a report back on this." Somebody has to go do that research, and that doesn't happen in chambers with a video camera. It's not necessary. The final products are brought back. We can't make any decisions without them. So that's what I'm saying. The ad-hocs right now are not operating as Brown Act bodies. They're just a way for us to let other people know that somebody's got this and is working on it, and you will hear back about it at the next meeting.
Okay. Can I, you've got more time, but I want to just see if I can tickle something out here, because there may be, this may be semantics here.
It is.
Okay. So let's see if we can work our way through the semantics maybe a little bit differently, which is, okay, this, from the city organizational, the city clerk perspective, the term ad hoc is problematic because it implies something official.
Mm-hmm.
And if it implies something official, it then, it then could mandate record-keeping and/or staffing, which we're saying, and the clerk is saying, "We don't have."
And we agree.
On the other hand, you're right that, and as we've all agreed to, that anybody can meet, right? So this may just to react, because this could be the solution to the problem. If we quote, "Get rid of the ad-hocs," hear me out, because that term we're not using.
Sure.
But we were very clear that there was nothing wrong with the chair of a committee saying, "So-and-so group is going to meet informally." What would be wrong with that? In other words, because it would allow the chair
That was my question to Matt.
Yeah.
I know, but he, Matt originally, I thought, I agree with you. I heard Matt say one thing originally, and then maybe he misunderstood, but it was different. But this would be the solution to the problem.
Right.
We get rid of the, we're getting rid of the ad-hocs, no staffing requirement, no official sanction, but so long as it's clear to a chair that he or she could say from the dais, you know, tomorrow morning at 8:30, three members are going to have breakfast at the Fox and Goose, and we're going to discuss X, Y, Z. Is that, is that not?
That, that would be allowable under these rules.
But not from the dais.
But why can't
No, that's what I'm asking, why not from the dais?
So let's be clear, say, not the official appointment from the dais, because the way we do it is when boards and commissions, and the way that the council has done it under council rules, the chair, i.e. in this case, the mayor, appoints people to ad-hocs
You're misunderstanding my question.
No, no, I understand, I understand your question, Mayor. I'm just trying to clarify the distinction between my answers, was that if the chair is making an appointment to an ad hoc, saying, "You and you work together on this," then that's the creation of an ad hoc committee. If we're just saying, "People are going to get together at the Fox and Goose," less than, less than a quorum, and work on it as a working group, that's not prohibited.
You can change that. Those are your rules, those are not Brown Act rules.
We're about, we're about, I think we're about to solve the problem here.
Yes, okay.
Mayor, it just can't happen from the dais. What she described as
I'm not agreeing, I'm not agreeing with her. I'm trying to, but I think
I am. What she described as her with two other individuals is still allowable under these rules.
That's what I'm saying.
What she can't do is from the dais say, "Me and Sean and Matt are going to be meeting, and we're going to be making some decisions, and we're going to do some things, but we're not going to have any open public meetings. You won't be able to be there. We're not going to tell the clerk. We'll be back next week." Instead, what she can do is, at the end of the meeting, say, "I have some things I'd like you to help me prepare, and we can bring them back next week." She's going to present them to the group, which is what she's doing anyway. You can't have an ad hoc from the dais that is a meeting at the Fox and Goose.
But we can't do that right now.
Hold on a second, please, Flo, because then the public can't be privy, there's no legislative record, there's no ability for the city staff to know what's happening, and there's no ability for our staff to help them with whatever research they're needing to do. If, however, she were to say, "We really need this to be a standing committee, there's something they're doing all the time that's, all she has to do, or the group has to do, is submit to PMPE that they'd like that to be a standing committee," then PMPE can say, "Sure, that makes sense, that's something that's an ongoing need, that you need people to be able to do."
Great.
And then there will be staffing. But Mayor, there are some committees and commissions, including this one, that at times, over the last few years, have grown to have dozens of ad-hocs.
You have brought forward, in my opinion, the right set of recommendations. I just want to see, one further distinction, to see if it makes sense, and if not, I'll drop it.
Sure.
Absolutely correct. I get, I get the idea, and you've said it, and Mr. Ruyak has said it, that the chair of a commission could not say, under our revised rules, "You are appointed to the following informal committee, and we're going to meet at the Fox and Goose." That they could do, but could she, from the dais, say, "Three of us are going to meet at the Fox and Goose?"
No.
In other words, that's different, that's different from, from appointing people.
But after the meeting, she could ask two people to help her with whatever
Saying that, you're saying it has to be done after the meeting, by and close, or what are you saying, Mr. Ruyak?
We meet on Zoom. We can't have, we can't discuss things after the meeting, the meeting ends. So this now has to be multiple people reaching out to each other, not knowing that the other people are talking to each other.
Okay, let, let, Mr. Ruyak, Dr. Kofur
My apologies, it's just this, I feel like we, if we
Mr. Ruyak, what is the line here? Because Councilmember Ashby, and the motivation behind this is to not allow the creation of anything official that is hard to staff, where there's no record-keeping. And so we just, I think, boiled it down to the real hypothetical here, in this case, Dr. Kofur, Measure U, could not appoint a subcommittee from the dais, even an informal subcommittee. Is, but can't she communicate anything from, from her dais here in announcing that a group of members are going to get together to discuss the following? That's, seems to be the question.
Well, the answer to your question is yes, that can be done, so long as the chair, as the, using the prerogative of the chair, does not appoint a committee to officially engage in a limited-term, specific task, that she could nonetheless say, a couple people can get, "Hey, if you guys want to, if you guys want to establish a working group, that's fine," but it wouldn't be an ad hoc committee.
So Dr. Kofer, then what's, what's wrong with the recommendation if you have any ability to say whatever you want from the dais?
It, because it basically makes it so that it's not an official part of our agenda where we talk about what we're going to do. Right now, you have all the transparency you want, and all you have to do is change the Sunshine Act to say that boards, committees, and commissions can have ad-hocs, and they will function exactly as they are right now, and there will be no problem. You all added this additional layer, saying that ad-hocs are Brown Act bodies, and then you're requiring your staff to come and watch us type on Google Docs. It's not necessary. And what I'm saying is, right now, you actually have the transparency of, "We report out at every single meeting. We're doing all the things you want us to do, and we don't need this. We are a group less than a quorum that does not continue to meet after 11 months, and we work on a specific topic, and we let everybody know that we're gonna do that, who's doing it, and we come back and tell the body." And you're essentially saying, "Don't, in the interest of transparency, don't do that. Drive yourselves underground."
Okay, let, thank you. Let's now hear from the other witnesses. Thank you.
Next speaker is Keon Bliss, then Graciela Castillo-Crings.
Reading the City Council, my name is Keon Bliss, the vice chair for the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, and completely 100% agree with everything that Dr. Kofer has just said. And, I mean, I want to make a key distinction with the Brown, like, you know, being that these are Brown Act bodies that we're, like, you know, Brown Act doesn't preclude ad hoc committees from existing. The city council may be prohibited from, like, from meeting in ad-hocs. But a key distinction is that you all actually have decision-making authority. Whereas our boards and commissions and chairs are advisory in nature and cannot make binding decisions. You yourself, Mayor, actually made this last year when we were talking about updating the use-of-force policy, where you said, "We, our commission does not have binding, has not decision-making authority. We are advisory in nature." So while the city clerk and the city attorney's office say that we can continue doing this stuff in informal ad hoc works, it's actually creating less transparency, and I remain concerned about the lack of written clarification. Whereas these assurances that we can continue meeting informally may not be guaranteed by a future council or attorney that may come into play. But most concerning is how this action actually increases the likelihood of Brown Act violations by eliminating the formal mechanism of ad-hocs, where we have to actually add it to our agenda. And, like, just to let you know, we actually take very detailed notes and minutes for each of our meetings, actually more so than even the city clerk provides for our public meetings, where we actually name our next steps, who's participating, all of those things. But by eliminating our ability to form ad-hocs, we're actually, like, we're actually making, enabling it so that we can't, like, so that we actually could meet, as, as was described, outside of the formal body without any sort of transparency and create less of it. And not just that, but such conditions would actually create an unethical violation of basic democratic principles and actually damage trust between our commissions and the community members that we are appointed to serve.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
I just want to name also two additional things that we had, like, this all came about based on the city auditor's report.
Your comments. Our next speaker is Graciela Castillo-Crings.
That's what I wanted to name.
Graciela Castillo-Crings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Graciela Castillo-Crings, and I'm currently the chair of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. Our commissioners routinely work in small work groups to do the research, to analyze complex policy, and meet with the Sacramento Police Department and community stakeholders to solicit input and feedback as we draft recommendations. Any information gathered must be brought to the larger body for discussion and action. The ad-hocs are always less than a quorum and have no authority to make decisions or move anything forward until the full body meets. The current proposal, seeking to eliminate these work groups and replace, replaces them with a bureaucratic process that ignores an existing challenge. Lack of staff. In November of 2021, the Sacramento City Auditor released an audit, and it stated, quote, about our commission, quote, "The city does not provide sufficient staff support to allow the commission to fulfill its purpose and duties, which has resulted in tensions between the commission, the Office of Public Safety and Accountability, and the Sacramento Police Department." As part of the March 22nd council meeting, the mayor proposed adding additional staff to help alleviate these tensions. Unfortunately, that request was denied. My concern is that by moving forward with this process, we could continue to exacerbate an existing problem that is now documented. My concern is that we are actually creating an unrealistic expectation for us as volunteers and for the community. Removing the ability for your appointed volunteers to create these small working groups removes one more tool for these bodies to solicit community feedback, elevate their voices, and do the work that you asked us to do. I, I ask you to find a different solution moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is a phone number online.
I have one more clarifying thing.
Go ahead. You got a second?
Mayor, you had actually suggested, what I was hearing in some of the tension was that we could actually try to have small working groups, but part of the problem was appointing from the dais. What if we decided to say, "We are gonna go ahead and meet at Fox and Goose"? Who wants to go? But you don't rate, like, you don't appoint. As the chair, I wouldn't appoint. You just allow the participation to naturally flow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker is online, phone number 4366, Mr. Davis.
Hello, yes. This, this is an example. I'm glad the Brown Act is under the microscope of scrutiny because a part of my plight is focusing in on the, the Brown Act. And I saw a workshop a couple of weeks ago about the Brown Act. And it seems like when people start talking about the Brown Act, it gets even confusing by the people who are supposed to oversee the Brown Act. First of all, there's many reasons why I compliment Mindy. And an example of what she did today is one of the examples. She was asked to come in front of the public, present it. She didn't have one problem technically presenting it. She never had a problem technically presenting it to the public, and it was clear. And as soon as she sat down, and, and then the other guy on the very end there started talking about it, I felt like I had heard a different report. So, you know, this is the reason why a person like me is challenging the Brown Act. Because it's not confusing to me what the Brown Act means or Proposition 209. But this is just another example of why Mindy, who was in the chamber for two and a half years and didn't miss, didn't miss any days there. And the other lady who was across from her, I don't know her name, didn't matter. She was the one who used to accept our paperwork. This is why I say that those two people should be at home. They can do everything they do in that chamber from home for two and a half years, and everybody that's in that chamber now should still be required to come back in there. But that was an outstanding presentation, and some of you who are supposed to speak that don't speak, you should learn from her. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Paula Lee, and then Barry Boyd.
Hello, Mayor Steinberg and council members. Paula Lee from the League of Women Voters. You have hopefully read our letters on this topic. The League of Women Voters tonight reiterates our opposition to the city ordinance language that disallows the use of ad hoc committees. We really support the ability of these folks who volunteer their time and their professional expertise for a better Sacramento to meet and work on short-term projects that require, as Flo Koffer said, research, analysis, and reporting. And without the availability of ad hoc committees, or now what I'm hearing, maybe working groups, commissions and boards would be required to extend public meetings beyond what is reasonable. These meetings would last all night. And then this new cumbersome process to receive approval for a subcommittee from P and P E and the council could take four to six months. You know the League believes in transparency. Transparency comes when the members, short of a quorum, report back to their respective board in a recorded, agendized, Brown Act public meeting discussion. That was our recommendation for city council ad hoc committees as well. Brown Acts, the Brown Act does not prohibit ad hoc committees, as noted tonight by the city attorney. Therefore, we wholeheartedly support the three amendments recommended in the letter that you received from various chairs and vice chairs of key boards and commissions. Thank you very much for your consideration to those amendments.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd, and then Marbella Sala.
Thank you, and good evening again. And I would like to start with saying I do agree with Dr. Kofer and the other speakers that are, that are also opposing this Agenda Item 16. With that, I just so wholeheartedly oppose the prohibition of the ability of boards and commissions to establish ad hoc committees. It's the semantics that we're flying back and forth of what can and cannot be done. The bottom line is the lack of transparency that Dr. Kofer eloquently stated in if this new way of doing business is to take place. The, um, the, what is also being asked as a part of this motion is that the boards and commissions would have to ask P and P E, as was stated by current P and P E Chair Ashby, to create, I believe it was her or maybe Mindy, my apologies, to, the boards, commissions would have to ask P and P E to establish a working group. And if P and P E decides to put that forward to the city council, the city council would then have to decide whether they would want to make that happen or not. That is a lack of the democratic process. And we are really wondering why this is being pressed so hard to take place to eliminate the ability for the independent bodies of volunteers that make up the city of Sacramento's boards and commissions. And in addition, I wholeheartedly oppose the passing of a motion to waive Rule 7, Section K point 1 of the council rules.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Which requires ordinance to be referred to the, to the law and ledge committee before coming to council.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Marbella Sala, and then Leah Morris is our final speaker on this item.
Hi, um, good evening, and this is Marbella. And, yeah, I got a little, I'm very, very confused, and I have a set of comments, but I'm just gonna say this, that I was confused because what all of you are suggesting is something that I used to, when I worked at UC Davis, used to joke about, that I needed to learn how to golf, because that's where all the decisions are being made. And so it sounds like that's what you're suggesting is okay. So with that, I'm gonna read my little comments. I'm, I'm here in support of the letter that was signed by the seven commission chairs. And in particular, I support the removal of the section that doesn't allow for the ad-hocs to exist in the name of transparency. For the past two years, I've been involved with the commission, and our work is completely advisory and most definitely transparent. Let me illustrate what that means. Currently, I'm part of the ad hoc of five that are working on submitting the 2021 annual report. It requires research, analysis, to determine what we recommended, what the final budget was, and our accomplishments. This takes time and thoughtfulness, and it cannot be done at a monthly meeting that is already sometimes longer than three hours. Once our analysis is done, we're gonna draft the report, present it at our next monthly meeting, then open it up for public discussion and participation, and a vote is taken that goes then to you all. And again, you will have a discussion and public participation before your final vote is done. So as you can see, at every step, there's transparency and public participation. Eliminating the ad-hocs is gonna severely hinder our ability to do this kind of work. And, and so I ask you, why do you want to end this? It makes no sense to me unless there's another reason that is not transparent to me and others. So I'm asking you, please accept the amendments that were suggested by the letter signed by your seven commission chairs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Leah, Leah Morris is our final speaker on this item.
Hello, thank you. I wanna thank the various involved parties for the work that they've done to draft these documents and provide some direction for the committees and commissions, particularly the direction for standardization of how the recommendations would be submitted by the various committees, commissions, advisory bodies. I am a member of the Animal Care Services Citizen Advisory Committee. We were formed in January of this year, 2022, and being a new committee, are learning our way through this work. Our regular meetings have very robust public input. And given the public input that, that we engage with, we find that our meetings do go for several hours and that those meetings are not conducive to getting work done. I'm interested to observe this discussion about the opportunity for working groups to, to have the opportunity to get together and do work, and would agree with the letter from the chairs about allowing, whether it's ad hoc committees or some other process of working group that would allow us to be able to work together and bring things forward to the meetings of our full Animal Care Services Advisory Committee. And if there is a process for a standing committee, then I would hope that that process could be somewhat expedited so that if we have to do standing committees, we can do that quickly and start our standing committees together to, to address topics that we're starting to get from the public who come forward to our meetings and are very, very robust in their discussions. Ad hoc committees would be valuable, and we have not, at this point, had such type of activity. But I do thank everyone for this work and giving us some direction on some of the other activities related to being a committee. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much to the members of the public. Let's turn it back to the city council, start with Mayor Protem Getta, who's on Zoom, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's conversation here. Sorry, excuse me. And first of all, I want to thank Mindy and our city clerk and our, our clerk staff for a lot of thought into this. They, they, our, our clerk staff is committed and has been always committed to making sure that, that they help not only execute the work of the council and those citizens who've given their time to be part of these volunteer citizen bodies, boards and commissions. And also, one thing that I also want to recognize our, our clerk staff for is their commitment to the public. They really do believe in the, the, the purpose of, of making sure that the public is informed, that they're aware of what decisions are happening. And so I, I could see there's been a lot of thought put into crafting where we're at today. Because I want to thank my colleagues on the plant, well, the, the, the P and P committee for taking the time to look at the structure of what we have. Yes, when we have 20 to 30 commissions, it, it's daunting, the amount of work and how best to be effective and where our resources go. I think it's important to, to look at, at our, at where the structure of our, our government is. And to some, it may think, it seem that that's a huge amount, but we now are a city of over half a million people. It's like we've really moved into, you know, into a place where the challenges continue to become even more significant. Our, our city has become even more diverse, and, and because of it, our challenges are also more diverse and complex. There, therein lies, I think, the benefit of, of why having strong public participation is key. And, and ensuring that our, that the diversity and the, the amount of, of folks in, in our community are involved in these citizen, volunteer, boards, and commission. And, you know, after having, you know, looked at, at the ordinance, listening to the public, and, and just reflected back on my time as, on the county planning commission, chairing that commission, also served on the rack when we had redevelopment. We had these redevelopment advisory committees that looked at localized recommendations on our, for S H R A and our redevelopment commission on how spending should be done. And those, that experience, I think, is what, to me, makes me think that where we are in this proposal is actually a step backwards in engaging public participation. The fact that we now have boards and commissions that are taking on the work of breaking down significant policies, the size of them because of our city also means that we, and become, we need to find avenues where they can have more productive conversations within the Brown Act restrictions and be able to do that. And so I do think that, that where we've moved forward here pushes us back. And then hearing from the League of Women Voters, who, you know, has had a strong position and analysis of, of, on good governance, it makes me question the direction we're going here. I, I don't think this was a, a bad exercise to look at how do we improve our board and commission process. But I, but I don't, I don't feel confident in, in where we're going. A couple thoughts here to point out. One, I think the proposal, as I heard the, the conversation, it moves to, to eliminate one, ad-hocs, which, as council mentioned, as our legal counsel, city attorney's office mentioned, are, are temporary bodies, ad-hocs, thereby and then conflating the issue of standing committees. Standing committees are committees, much like our law and ledge, or, you know, P and P E, even the water committees, water becomes such a significant issue that we felt that it must be a standing committee, and we need to discuss it each time. Ad-hocs by their very nature are temporary, and in, in an essence, designed to tackle one complex problem so that the rest of the body can continue to move on and carry on the business of the public and the business of, of our city. So if, and I have no objection, if P and P E or whatnot wants to create standing committees and say, "You know what? We need to look at this, this, say, the planning commission, and maybe we need a standing committee on the waterfront because it's been such a significant challenge that we want our planning commission to do that." Or, you know, the issue, the issue of addressing, you know, gap finding. Or, you know, the issue of addressing, you know, gap finding. So maybe we want our planning commission to consistently focus on that, on top of its other duties. Maybe that is a good role for saying, hey, maybe the PNP and the council should look at the standing committee. But I think what's happened here is we've conflated the issues where we're eliminating what I hear from very engaged volunteer citizens, board and commission members, saying, we'd like to be able to continue to find a way so that the public knows that we're working on significant issues, and they can engage those members of the boards and commissions who have said they're going to be assigned to tackle that particular point for the board and commissions. Also, I think the description that these ad hocs are making decisions in the cover of darkness without the public eye, I think is, also is not true. I mean, the fact is, is they're not the majority of the body that makes the decision. And in that, and if anything, I do believe that this kind of goes contrary to public participation or public transparency, because by its very nature of not being able to have temporary bodies where the commission says they're working on something, people are going to be meeting on their own, as is done now. The council decided, you know, back in 2015, that we would institute the Brown Act requirements for ad hocs because, you know, we were dealing with significant issues, and we wanted to have all of the agenda requirements that needed to be done, and so we could have good participation and engagement. I think that that's a different level than what I'm hearing from boards and commissions, where they're volunteers, they're trying to break down issues, and then present them back to the body. So I think, one, you know, the recommendations on, you know, rotation of chairs are good. I think, you know, having two years, having, you know, been chair myself, I was appointed three times to the chair of the County Planning Commission. By the end of the first year of my term as chair, I finally was understanding how to move the meeting and how to help our colleagues manage a meeting in itself. It was the second year that I felt that I was becoming effective. So I do think that one year, limiting it to one year, is too restrictive. And having two years at least allows, for those that want, allows folks to participate. And then it does allow for others to come forward and step up after that second year. The last piece I'll bring up is on the staffing side. I agree that if there is a standing committee, then yes, let's staff it, and then we can find what appropriate budget allocations we have for that. But that's not what I keep hearing from our citizen voluntary boards. They do not want to be prohibited from the chair to having the ability to designate or to say who's working on what issue. So I honestly think that where we've gone in this direction, as, again, to where I started, is a step backwards in encouraging public participation. I'm excited, the fact that we have boards and commission members that do more than just show up to the meeting that they're assigned to and that are meeting out more often and engaging with folks. That, to me, is a good sign of a healthy democracy in our city. The fact that it's not just that Thursday night that the planning commission members get together, that they're doing their work, that they're not paid for. So at this moment, you know, as it stands, I can't support the current motion, but I'm willing to hear for recommendations on how to continue the authority for the chair to add or recommend ad hocs. They don't have to be staffed.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. And I want to start off by saying that I agree with most of this document, and I want to applaud the clerk and her team for that. I think we're really focused on a provision, and I don't want to lose the fact that out of a long list of options that have been presented today, I think the City Attorney's Office and the Clerk's Office, working through the chair, did a great job of clarifying an ordinance that needed to be updated. So while we talk about one specific provision, I don't want to lose that. So I am on PNP, and I just want to note that while we did, yes, vote to transmit this to the council for consideration, it was not because we had consensus on all of the policies. And I know I have had these concerns from that meeting, and I want to echo the comments from the League of Women Voters, who noted, as noted before, helped inform our transparency policies, that these are volunteers. Unlike the council, they can't call special or emergency meetings. If they're going to keep up with the pace of change and discussion at the council without those tools, I don't see how they avoid being able to meet in between meetings. So the real question is the mechanism for that. So I'm actually okay with the idea of the standing committee process to PNP. Those, in my mind, are kind of quasi-permanent bodies that we're creating because there is an ongoing need. And those should be staffed, and that should be discussed, because obviously, we don't want to overcommit the clerk and her team to being able to staff those. But ad hocs, as has been mentioned, is a fundamentally different thing. These are temporary, specific to a task. And allowing, as we do under our current code, chairs to decide which configuration of members will be essentially a Brown Act bubble from the dais reduces the likelihood, I think, that there will be Brown Act violations, as Chair Kofar noted, and ensures that the public knows what conversations are happening and creates accountability during the meetings for report backs or questions from the public. So if our goal is transparency and accountability, and recognizing that staff does not have the capacity to staff 100 meetings a month, I want to agree with the Mayor Protem that this provision is moving us in the opposite direction of our goals. So I'd actually like to make a substitute motion that replaces the proposal to eliminate ad hocs with further guidance on ad hocs, requiring them to be announced from the dais, requiring a report back at the next commission meeting, and making clear that they be temporary, i.e. no longer than 11 months. And I'd like to further add language to require that recommendations submitted by commissions be transmitted to the council as a potential action item within 90 days. I know the details of this will be worked out in our policy and procedures document, but I don't see any harm in setting a standard that this ordinance be high-level direction to inform those processes as they're developed and implemented. These residents, as we've noted, spend a lot of time developing recommendations, and it's only fair that we establish a process that respects that contribution. So that's my substitute motion, Mayor, to keep the Vice Mayor's changes as they are, but to replace the provision to eliminate ad hocs with clear guidance on transparency for ad hocs and a requirement that commission recommendations be transmitted to the council as a potential action item within 90 days. Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from Councilmember. There's a substitute motion. Let's hear from Councilmember Vang.
I'll second that substitute motion.
It's already been seconded. Thank you, Councilmember Geta, by Councilmember Vang. Councilmember, I don't know if it's first Vang or Chenier. Go ahead.
Yeah, just really quickly. So thank you, and I'm very supportive of the substitute motion. I think that this is really a matter of trust. We appoint these folks to do the work. They go above and beyond. We need to recognize that. We need to thank them. And when so many of them are coming to us and saying, this is a way that we can work better, we need to listen. So with that, it has my support.
I'm going to make a comment as soon as Councilmember Vang is done, because I do want to weigh in formally on this. Go ahead, Councilmember Vang.
I know that I second that. I know I second that motion, but I do just want to take this time to thank Mindy just for her hard work, and also the PNP Committee. I know y'all have worked really hard to bring this item to council. I know what is center and focus right now in the conversation is around ad hocs, and I'll get back to that. But I also just want to acknowledge that I know there are other items regarding the commission structure that all of y'all worked really hard on, from like limitation of terms to vacancy. So I just do want to make sure, you know, that I speak on that because I know the hard work that it took to get to this moment. I know what I've heard from other commissioners, that sometime onboarding is really hard. And Mindy, you've done a really great work to make sure that we create a process to ensure that we are onboarding our new commissioners in a way so they can understand how commissions work. So I really do want to say thank you to you, just for all the hard work that you've done for the past several months. I also do have concern about eliminating ad hocs, as this is the reason why I second Councilwoman Valenzuela's counter motion. I think a big part of it is, while I understand the rationale of it coming to PNP, and then going to council for a vote, I think one concern that I have is really the timeframe of that, because a lot of the issues that our ad hoc works on is urgent, right? And I want to make sure that we're not doing anything to hinder the good work that they're doing. The other piece, you know, I've spoken to several of my commissioners. They have shared with me that ad hoc is really just their only way to actually get the work done because there's limited meetings throughout the year. And so I don't want to do anything that would hinder the work that they're doing. And so, yeah, I mean, that's my only comment. Really looking forward, you know, hoping that the counter motion passes so that we can have a path forward for the ad hocs. But again, just really want to take this opportunity to thank Mindy just for your great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to weigh in. First of all, I think it's really important to genuinely express thank you to all of the residents of this city who choose to volunteer for boards and commissions, because you don't have to do any of it, and you do it because you care about your city. And, you know, I know for myself, I've appeared before the Measure You Committee. Yes, remember that, Dr. Kofar? Memorable as it was, but it's good, you know? And we've worked together on a lot of things and are going to continue to, no matter how this comes out, okay? And thank you. And thank you to Mindy very, very much. You're trying to help manage in this part of the city operation in a way that works for everybody. And Vice Mayor Ashby, thank you. You took this on as the chair of PNP, and it's a lot, and obviously, it's a little bit controversial, but I want to say, and I, no boos here, please. I want to say why I'm backing the main motion, Vice Mayor Ashby's motion here. I think we're making a little bit of a mountain out of a molehill, and this is why. I looked at Merriam-Webster's dictionary about the definition of ad hoc committee. And what it says is, "An ad hoc committee is generally understood to be temporary in nature." Fine, we all agree on that. It goes on to say, "The executive committee and our full board establishes an ad hoc committee to perform a specific issue or probe or task. Once the task is completed, the committee disbands." The key sentence for me is the middle sentence, that it is certainly implied, if not expressed, that it is an official act of the main commission or any governing bodies. It's an official act. What the city clerk and the vice mayor are saying, I think, the way I interpret it, is that when it becomes official, there are course, let me finish, please. There are corresponding duties that are commensurate with making it official. It needs to be, whether or not it's official Brown Act committee or not, it has to be staffed in some way, overseen in some way, if it's an official city committee. So the recommendation says, let's get rid of ad hoc committees. Under that definition, what really, I think, the PNP Committee and the clerk are saying, and why I support them, is because, and it may seem contrary to the transparency issue, because I agree, you might get maximum transparency with official ad hocs, agreed, but you also have a lot more work that has to be balanced. The Measure You Committee, this is how good you are and how much work you've done, has had 17 ad hoc committees since its formation. Got them right here. I can read them all. So if you can't do ad hoc committees, what the city is really saying is, we want you to continue to meet in any way that you want, so long as you're not meeting as a majority, but we want you to do it more informally. In some ways, that gives the commissions more independence, less staff oversight about what you can or can't discuss. It's actually more nimble. You can form a work group. You can form a study group. You can meet in any way that you want, and then bring those informal recommendations back to your full commission. So in some ways, we really are, in my view, arguing about semantics. Because so long as you can do all of that, but the city then is not responsible for staffing 17 ad hoc committees over time, I think that's a fair balance here. If this were to say that the commission cannot meet in small groups in any form, and that the only time you can discuss your commission business is when you're meeting at the formal dais, I would oppose that. But that's not what it says, and it's not what's implied. But we do not have the capacity here to be able to provide the full staffing, the oversight for ad hoc committees or standing committees, for that matter. And that's why the ask is that you work with the city council, and where you want and need a standing committee, come forward, and we'll work this out together. And I guarantee you, as I'm mayor for the Measure You Committee or the Police Accountability Commission, if we're strategic together, I would vote for your standing committees to be able to break your work down. So I think that this is a fair recommendation, and now we've had the debate. So we want to go back and have it some more, I guess. Okay. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead.
I'll be as quick as I can, Mayor, because I don't need to reiterate. I just want to, you know, say a few obvious things. One, the last thing on the planet that I want to do right now is spearhead some controversial vote at this dais. So please recognize, this is not fun for me. However, you asked me to bring forward the best package I could. I appreciate Councilmember Vang and others pointing out that, you know, it's a big package, and we're down to one issue, and that's totally reasonable. And I want to say something to those of you in the crowd, too. When we got, we were absolutely crucified, the council, for ad hocs. It was probably 2013, something like that. I said the exact same things that you're saying. How the hell will we do any, how will we get things done? We need ad hocs. I said the same thing. I felt the same way. I was really frustrated when we lost the ability to have ad hocs. And I was frustrated with the League of Women Voters, and I was frustrated with Common Cause when they pushed us. And it was really the B. The B was all over us. They wrote several articles about us having ad hocs and how that wasn't transparent. So I totally sympathize with the callers and the letter writers, and everybody else who sees ad hocs as the best pathway forward. But in the end, we got rid of ad hocs. It was hard at first, but we started more standing committees. And I believe we have become more transparent. And just as the mayor has described, even though it sounds a little counterintuitive, having the formal things, anything that's formal, have these rules and structure has created more transparency. And so I have to say that those people were right. And so for me, the other thing I would just say to everyone at this dais and listening and watching is, these rules can be changed whenever you want to change them. This is a starting point. I can't support the substitute because I think this is a better starting point. I think it puts the city in the best place to succeed. And if somewhere down the line, you want to change it, or maybe the substitute passes, and that doesn't work, and you want to change it, this council can always come back and always be responsive to the people who are coming forward. There are several changes in here that are made responsive to people's input, the two years, the trying to find a way to do the standing committees. And so, Mayor, I just feel like I need to say that for myself here. I'm going to support the initial motion, but it's not the end of the world. To me, at the end of the day, we can change this. If it's not working, you all can change it, probably be gone. But, you know, you can keep an eye on it and see what's working, as you should. And there may be other components in here. There may be other things that y'all decide, eh, we want to do that a little bit differently, too. It's a good thing. And the PNP Committee, for as long as it's in existence, should always go back and review these rules and try to bring forward transparency. So that's good governance.
Good. Thank you. Let's try not to recreate the entire debate here, but it's fine. Let's just, I want to make sure we get through the list here relatively quickly if we can. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I also marvel at the fact that back when we were under the scrutiny, back in Mayor Johnson's days, about ethics and about transparency, the Vice Mayor is exactly correct. Our feet were held to the flames about transparency, and ad hocs were the target of many advocates, including the League of Women Voters and Common Cause. And so they really, as the Vice Mayor said, forced to change in the way we do things. So now the public has absolute access to our process. So the question then becomes, should boards and commissions be held to that standard or not? What I hear from Dr. Kofar is, well, you're an advisory body, so you don't need that level of scrutiny. Mindy has brought forward a package to say, let's get uniform, and let's say that you are held to the same level of accountability as the city council. I don't see a problem with that. And the fact of the matter is, you can form working groups, but we cannot staff a lot of ad hoc committees. It's just the staff time is not there. It's not available. It's not economical. You can get your work done. And it really is just a different way to call out what you do. You know, you want this body to be completely transparent and accountable. And I think that it's not extraordinary to hold yourselves to the same standard as the League of Women Voters and Common Cause did to us back then, and as... as the League of Women Voters and Common Cause did to us back then, and as the vice mayor said, we're probably a stronger body in the eyes of the public as a result. So I'm going to support the original motion.
Original motion, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, I want to provide some clarity to my motion, because I think it's just, if we aren't prepared to give boards and commissions the full access to the resources that we have as a council, it's fundamentally not okay to hold them to the same equivalent standard. And I don't hope I'm not going too far beyond what the League of Women Voters and others have said tonight. I think, I said this at PNP E, if we want to give boards and commissions the ability to call special and emergency meetings to do what they need to do, that's one thing, but we're not doing that, and we're also saying, you can't have these informal decision-making bodies. So I want to clarify my motion, in case it wasn't clear, because I think it was misunderstood, that the current standard for the ad hocks is, like, my intention for this is that they not be required to be staffed, that these are informal bodies that are under the Brown Act bubble, that they, just as if I was meeting with two or three of my colleagues, I would not expect city staff to be there, same for these ad hoc groups. And I just want to make sure that's clear in my motion, to keep ad hocks and to create greater transparency in that process.
Okay, thank you, that's clear. Last comment, Mayor Protem.
I was just going to reiterate that motion, that just because the Chair of a planning commission or one of our boards says that we're going to create an ad hoc, doesn't all of a sudden require the budget request immediately be executed. It means that these volunteers, who are already volunteering and using their own personal expertise, many of them are architects, or have other legal backgrounds or whatnot, and doing their work, are using their talent to execute and provide advice. So, to that point, I don't think that the issue about budgets for ad hocks are necessarily the issue. If a committee or one of our commissions wanted more resources, as one of the commissions has come to us to do that, they can do that, and then we will take that into consideration during the normal budget cycle. So, I'll continue to advocate for the substitute motion.
All right, thank you. The substitute motion is the proper pending motion. Let's call the roll on the substitute motion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
No.
Councilmember Laloe?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No.
Motion's defeated. Call the main motion, please.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Chenier?
No.
Mayor Protem, Guerra?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, the motion passes five to four. And I don't think it's a radical change, but let's see how it works. Okay, thank you, everybody. Members, that concludes the regular agenda for this evening. Are there council ideas and questions?
Mayor, I do have one board and commission appointment to read to the record to the Active Transportation Commission, Nicholas Hardin.
Okay, very good, thank you. Council ideas and questions, council?
Last one.
And that should be the last time I'll have to do that, because you just changed that rule.
Oh, okay, well, that would have been unanimous. Okay.
You have two speakers.
Let me take council ideas and questions first. Go ahead. Councilmember Laloe, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick information. Last week, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for attending the event at Grant High School, while they did the ribbon cutting for their brand-new field. Not only is this field available for the students, but also the community. So from six o'clock in the morning till eight, they can utilize this beautiful facility for walking around, beautiful track field, phenomenal football field. So, you know, my high is off to this superintendent, Dr. Martinez, the staff, and the school trustee. And also, I want to congratulate the Grant High School varsity team for having a winning season so far. They're 2-0, and if I'm not mistaken, they beat one of the schools and one of the council members sitting right to my
Natomas.
Yeah, it was a good game.
Absolutely.
Very good game. So, thank you very much, and congratulations to Grant High. Go Pacers.
I'm just glad somebody can give the Pacers a run for their money, even if they don't win.
It's still a W.
Great spirit out there, really great spirit out in
You know, just to say, on that, Mr. Mayor, it's so amazing that at this football game, it was a full house.
Yep.
Everybody was in, the environment was extremely friendly, and I wish that our local newspaper would cover these stories as well, about what a wonderful community the Heights is, versus just, you know, some of the negatives. But I'm so proud of that school, so proud of the principal and the students. Great job, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Chenier?
Thanks, Mayor. Just like to add to the log for next week, creating a student advisory position on the council.
Okay, let's add that to the log. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just an announcement, our last Pops in the Park show of the year will be September 17th at South Natomas Community Park. It starts at 6:00 PM. The band will be hip service. I think this is going to be a really big show, and I expect all of Gardenland and Northgate and South Natomas to come out, and maybe I can even wrangle Vice Mayor Ashby to come on down. And so, you're all invited. It's going to be, you know, obviously, the last Pops show of my career, and I'd really love to have support of my colleagues.
What day is it?
It's Saturday, September 17th, 6:00 PM, South Natomas Community Park.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few announcements. I wanted to take an opportunity to invite the public for our end-of-the-summer pool party at Pennell, this Sunday from 9:00 to 4:00. I know it's going to be super hot in the triple digits, so inviting everyone to bring their bathing suit and join us from 1:00 to 6:00 o'clock. Free admission, live DJ, free popsicle. It's going to be lots of fun, so really inviting friends and family and everyone in South Sacramento and across the city to come join us. And so, just wanted to make sure that I announced that. And then lastly, this weekend is Labor Day weekend, and as you all know, families and residents across the nation, we're going to be celebrating the many contributions and achievement of our everyday workers. And I know, we all know firsthand, that nothing gets done in this city without our incredible city staff. They have really helped us move forward during this pandemic, and they are the backbone of our city. And so, from our firefighters, to our solid waste truck drivers, to all of our community, all of our residents and YPSI staff at our community center, I just want to give a shout out to you. Thank you so much for your heart and your hustle, and just keeping the city together. I really want to just dedicate Labor Day to each and every one of you. The 4,000-plus employees that we have in the city, want to wish each and every one of you a happy Labor Day weekend. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Yep, I, too, would like to thank our friends in the central labor, and building and trades, and our own hard-working staff, and just, you know, everybody who's kept us going, not just through COVID, but always, we have amazing people. This is a union town, and we're lucky to live here and have such great things to celebrate over Labor Day, so really proud of that. Also, want to invite everybody out this Friday. It's our last-first Friday of the summer. We have these big concerts with food trucks and whatnot, and so this Friday night, if you feel like it, you can come out to the regional park. May I should come by? And this is a big Deanna event. She puts these together. Usually have a lot of people there, right, city manager? And this week is Wonderbread Five is the band. It's a really big band, so we're excited to have them back, and lots and lots of fun, dancing, food trucks, and other great stuff. So come out, bring your family, and enjoy Labor Day. And then, just one point of privilege, I would like to tell my husband happy anniversary, because I have now been married for 20 years.
Wow, 20 years today?
20 years, yep. Thank you.
Congratulations. That's wonderful.
You guys share with us what the secret is.
I only have one question. What are you doing here?
Well, our anniversary is technically coming up, but it's this week, and, you know, I was a single mom, as most of you guys know, so I met him really young, and I had a baby in tow, and he took the chance on a single mom, moved to Sacramento, helped me raise that kiddo who's 27 now, and add two more to our crew. So, he's one in a million, and I'm lucky to call him my husband. So, grateful for 20 years, and looking forward to the next 20.
Great. Any more. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to take a moment of personal privilege, and I want to thank the mayor and the council, and the entire city of Sacramento employees for their wonderful support to me and my family, with the cards, the phone calls, the flowers, the plants, just everything that was given to us during the passing of my father, at 96 and a half years of age, lived a good life. And I just want to thank all of you for supporting me and my family during a very tough time, but it was a great time to be there and celebrate with him, and be there with him as he said his goodbye to us here on earth, but we will see him again. So I just want to thank you personally, each and every one of you, for what you did to help make it easier for me to get through, and so, thank you.
You better believe it, Mr. Jennings. Kara Kara, I'm sorry, on Zoom, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, too, again, wanted to extend my prayers for your father and your family. Councilmember Jennings, I think if anything, you know, why we do this, and why what we do is for our families. And also, to, congratulations for 20 great years, Vice Mayor Ashby, on what an amazing opportunity with your family. Also, I wanted to thank everyone on the council who participated with the march with the United Farm Workers. I know many of you participated in different legs of the journey as we approach Labor Day here. And from a personal standpoint, I remember what it was like being a low-income farmworker as a kid, farmworker kid. I saw a lot of young kids out there who also came with their parents. And so I just wanted to thank my members of the council who joined in and shared their support, and those families who were just out there speaking up on behalf of voting rights. I think the mayor, I think, was the most articulate about what this current phase is, and is the next stage, and making sure we're fighting for voting rights. With that, Mr. Mayor, on another happier note, I hope I get to see some of you over at Southside Park for the NAACP Rhythm and Blues Festival. It's going to be hot, but so is the music. So, thanks, everyone, for this good evening discussion, and a happy Labor Day.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, we do have a couple items, a couple members of the public wants to testify. Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I have two speakers in chambers and a few remote. The first is Devonte Morris, and the second is Keon Bliss.
How many online?
I have four online.
Okay.
Devonte Morris?
Hello, my name is Devonte Morris, and I'm a CDL Class A holder.
Lift the mic a little bit, yeah, thank you.
Sorry. Hello, my name is
I was presenting last, and I'm a little, will you restart the timer, please?
Hello, my name is Devonte Morris, and I'm a CDL Class A holder. And I came here to ask you guys if you guys could create some type of legislation to prevent employers from testing for THC for employment here in Sacramento, because it's legal in California, and a lot of our revenue comes from marijuana, and taxes from marijuana and stuff. But I wanted to specifically ask if you guys could prevent Sacramento Regional Transit from testing their employees for THC, because their argument is, well, we have to follow federal guidelines. But Sacramento Regional Transit doesn't cross federal state lines. Their buses stay within the city of Sacramento. This bus stays within California, so there's no reason why they should be arguing that. And then, plus, if they're arguing a safety issue, a whole country, Canada, they just legalized it for the whole entire country. And if it's a safety issue, then Canada's transportation department should be going down in the gutter, but it's not. And marijuana's been legal there for a long time. So, right now, we have a lot of people in Sacramento that smokes THC, and then it's getting discriminated against by the employers.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Keon Bliss, and then Mr. Davis, who's online.
I'm going to skip, because you're not listening, you don't care.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Davis, and then following Mr. Davis is Barry Boyd.
Yes, I would like to, as you know, we have a millennial following of nationalities of all races throughout the city, and I was going to leave it alone, but they put a bug in my ear tonight. Since we're talking about the Brown Act, you need to, mayor and city attorney, and also city clerk, you need to either remove the city manager's report or have that be implemented. So I'll leave that alone. Now, the shouts I want to send out tonight, first of all, I want to thank the mayor. He came to a ribbon cutting in Del Paso Heights. That's where that was. It wasn't in District 2, it was in Del Paso Heights. And I like to make the distinction, because I know the difference. And that was very honorable, because that field, for those of you who aren't aware, is, 52 years ago, that was called Del Paso Junior High School Field. So it was an honor for me to go back and look at it in family members, because it took us back, some of us, 50 years. Now, the other thing I wanted to say is that the drum line was there, and I got a chance to talk to them and the director, and they said thank you to me for encouraging the mayor and city council after Labor Day to bring them into the chamber and give them acknowledgement for going to DC and New York. That's a heck of an accomplishment for teenagers, and the boys' basketball team won the championship this year at the Golden One. And I want to end by saying that I encountered somebody from the, I think it's called the North Gardenland Association. They tried our cheesecakes last week, and we got rave reviews from their organization. So that shows you, we're all over the city. And if we had money from Measure You and ARPA, we could hire people and take advantage of this Labor Day weekend. But we're going to do it anyway, because
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd, and then Hillary Bagley.
Thank you, and good evening again. Just as a reminder, our elected officials are to serve the will of the people. The will of the people had just spoken, as well as the experts that serve on those voluntary bodies, who know best what process should be done. The city council just dismissed the will of the people while standing on its laurels to state how democracy and transparency should be done here in the city of Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Hillary Bagley, and then Matthew Winters is our final speaker.
Thank you. Good evening to the mayor and city council. My name is Hillary Bagley Franzoya. I'm a retired prosecutor and founder of the District Attorney's Animal Cruelty Prosecution Unit, and the first chair of the Animal Cruelty Task Force. I have served on boards, volunteered hundreds of hours at a local animal shelter, been involved in animal welfare advocacy for many years, and most significantly, I've worked in every type and level of animal abuse and neglect equating to hundreds of cases over 30 years. The city of Sacramento has a problem. That problem stems from the continued bad management on the part, bad judgment on the part of the animal services manager, his mismanagement that I believe results in the inhumane treatment of Sacramento animals and poor fiscal practices. The current manager has openly admitted to following what is a highly controversial and dangerous model of operation. That model, under that model, unwanted, unaltered, stray and roaming animals are turned away from the public counter often when a subjective shelter capacity is reached. During COVID and after, community members were told to return stray, unaltered animals back into the intersections where they were found. Make no mistake, ladies and gentlemen, the advocates and proponents of this dangerous model condone that practice today. The return of stray, unaltered animals into city streets. Incredibly, they assert it is safe for animals. Meanwhile, they naively deny the risk of vehicular trauma, the suffering of cruelty awaiting those animals, they deny the liability and transference of risk, and they fail to address the inevitable breeding and production of more surplus animals that result from their model. Community members have sent hundreds of communications into you, this model is not what the community wants nor pays for. I believe that implementing this.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, my questions are, who authorizes?
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Matthew Winters.
Yes, hello, city council and mayor. Um, my name is Matthew Winters, resident of District Seven. I've, I've spoken, I've spoken with several of you personally, um, about this issue before. And once again, I'm, I'm just here to highlight the, the, um, the lack of enforcement regarding leaf blower noise regulations. So I have submitted multiple complaints, possibly more than 20. Um, I have spoken with Peter Leemos, Sean Bartosz and Jose Mendez. Um, many of these, uh, employees with the city code enforcement department do not understand the laws regarding leaf blower noise, nor do they seem to want to enforce them. And, and, uh, Jose Mendez personally told me that he would never ticket anyone for leaf blower noise. So I just want to ask and pose this question to you, is there any level of noise which would rise to the level that, that should be outlawed, which it already is, you know, outlined within the city code? So with that, I, I, I do believe that the city code outlines a, a good noise level, which is 65 dB. And, and basically everyone within the city using these large, uh, commercial style backpack leaf blowers are violating that currently. It causes me great distress. I'm a disabled veteran. I, I have more than 10 years of public service and, and just me and my personal neighborhood have reported many and, and there has been no enforcement. I even stopped a code enforcement officer on my street while there was, uh, you know, this taking place and pointed it out and he said he only deals with vehicles. I think that the city needs to, you know, push on, on, on your code enforcement staff a little bit to, to actually understand the language of the law and to enforce these things, at the very least when people are crying out for, you know, enforcement of these. Um, I, I would really greatly appreciate it. I think it's bad for the environment. I think it's bad for the residents. It's also bad for these employees. You know, I live near Curtis Park and people really enjoy and pay a lot to live here and it, and it really ruins the, the environment, the vibe, everything, when, when those things start up. Please help, help me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, thank you, members. Uh, members of the public, members of the city staff, nothing else to come before the city council, we are adjourned.